All right, it is now, let's see, five thirty-two, so we're ready to go. I would like to welcome everybody to the Hutchinson City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. I am stepping in for the mayor, 'cause he is not here at all. First agenda item is to approve the council agenda and any agenda additions and/or corrections.
Mayor and council, I've got one, I guess, correction for you. It asks that you remove item seven A from the agenda. Otherwise, something else is good to go.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those corrections.
Second. All right, so, or a motion from Mary, second from Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, we have an invocation from Oak Heights Covenant Church.
Good evening, city council members. I'm Steve Larson, senior pastor of Oak Heights Covenant Church here in Hutchinson. And this year, it's my privilege to also serve the Ecumenical Ministerial Association of Hutchinson, along with Pastor Howard Anderson of Hunter's Ridge Community Church as co-chairs of that organization. We want to thank the city leaders of Hutchinson for your openness and for your support of the various expressions of faith represented here. Know that the faith leaders of this community uphold the city and its leaders in regular prayers, and I gratefully share this prayer with you today. Let us pray. Dear greater God, we give you thanks for the summer season, which we have had the privilege to share in our community. As the season now transitions to fall, we see the fields surrounding the city of Hutchinson full with the abundance creation has graciously offered us. We pray a special blessing upon the farmers as they work tirelessly to bring this harvest to market, thus supplying the sustaining needs of many. In the same way, we ask for you to bless the city council members and all city leaders and staff with wisdom for the roles they fill in Hutchinson, strengthen them for the work that they do, even though there are times they do not hear a thank you. This evening, I pray for your gifts of wisdom, unity, and peace to be upon each of the city council members. May they graciously hear each item that is before them today and make clear decisions that will continue to assist this community in its growth. May Hutchinson continue to be a city where families make their home, where children can learn and play and grow in safety, where people, at whatever age and stage of life, they find care and compassion, and where all people thrive. Now bless each council member as they carry out their work. I pray for Mary, Chad, Dave, and Pat, and also for our mayor Gary. May they have a sense of satisfaction in the work that will be accomplished here tonight, in your gracious name.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Item A is a resolution number one-five-four-eight-nine, a resolution accepting a six hundred dollar donation from Walter and Lynn Clay for future equipment purchases at the Hutchinson Police Department.
Motion to approve resolution one-five-four-eight-nine?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Pat and a second from Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I would also like to thank everybody involved with the new playground down at the fire department. They, a lot of work went into that. They had a nice little dedication ceremony last night. And if you haven't seen the new park, make sure you go check it out, because it's beautiful.
Fireman's Park.
What did I say?
You said the fire department.
Fireman's Park. The fire department guys were helping at the park, so.
There's one here driving over to the fire station looking for a new playground, so.
There's no playground at the department. The park is down by Mickey and Wells Fargo, so. All right, do we have anybody tonight that wants to address the city council? No? All right, approval minutes. We have the regular meeting of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, and the workshop minutes of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Dave and a second from Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next we have the consent agenda. It's kind of a long one, so settle in. A has been taken off of the consent agenda, so B is a consideration for approval of resolution number one-five-four-seven-seven, a resolution to sell at auction unclaimed property and bicycles. C is a consideration for approval of resolution number one-five-four-eight-seven, a resolution approving MinDOT limited use permit to install trail assets along Highway fifteen south. D is a consideration for approval of resolution number one-five-four-nine-zero, a resolution establishing traffic control devices, no parking here at a corner on Sixth Avenue Northeast. E is a consideration for approval of addendum to development agreement with Hutch Uptown Commons LLC. F is consideration for approval of grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to acquire and move houses from the Hundred Year Floodplain. G is a consideration for approval of pavement management projects at Creekside. H is a consideration for approval of Spectra Shield Manhole Lining Project. I is a consideration for approval of the twenty-twenty-two wastewater lift station improvements. J is a consideration for approval to purchase a wheel loader from Titan Machinery for Creekside. K is a consideration for approval to allow equal access to use two parking spaces behind Arts Place on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two for a horse display. Let's see, L is a consideration for approval of premises permit applications for the Hutchinson Youth Basketball Association to operate gambling devices at the River House Kitchen and Drinks and Main Street Sports Bar. M is a consideration for approval of issuing a parade permit to the Hutchinson High School Student Council on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And N, or Claims Appropriations and Contract Payments, Register A. Is there anything anybody wants to see pulled off?
Motion to approve agenda one.
Okay. All second? We have a motion for approval from Pat and a second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. For the second consent agenda, we have Claims Appropriations and Contract Payments, Register B. I have a check on there for my business, so someone else will have to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mary and a second from Dave, and I will abstain. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearings, we have none tonight. We have no communications requests or petitions. We have no unfinished business. Under new business, we have resolution number one-five-four-eight-eight, a resolution authoring issuance of six million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general obligation bonds, series two-zero-two-two-A.
And Mayor and council, I will note, we do have a revised resolution. That's on your, I emailed it out to you this afternoon. It's on your desk tonight, and that's actually now down to five point eight-eight-five.
Right. So.
Yep, that's been revised downwards based on the sale today. We received another premium bid on our bonds, so that resulted in more monies than we were originally requesting, so then we're able to reduce our debt accordingly. So tonight's bond sale, I'll turn it over to Nick in a little bit here, but we have two components. We have our usual street reconstruction bonds that you see every year, just a little under two million dollars worth of bonds. Those are fifteen-year bonds repaid by special assessments from benefiting property owners and the city's debt tax levy. The other component is just over three point nine million dollars to finish our new police facility, and that's twenty-five-year bonds with a repayment from the city's debt tax levy. So obviously, with the new PD debt coming on board, that's resulting in our debt tax levy increasing. And we're trying to keep that increase as low as possible for twenty twenty-three by having this component interest only for the first year, so that helps a little bit on our debt levy. But obviously, we're going to see increases over the next eight to nine years, I think in the range of three to four percent increases in the debt levy, and then it should stabilize at that point. With that said, I'll turn it over to Nick Anhut. He's with our bond advisor, Ellers, and he'll go over today's bond sale. And then when he is complete, we're available for questions on anything you have.
Thank you, council. Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates, advisors to the city. Happy to see you again with the results of tonight's sale. First and foremost, the city did defend its double A minus credit ratings. That's a independent rating analyst looked at the city's financial history as well as projections for your current and upcoming budgets and your debt profile, and saw fit to keep your double A minus rating, which is a median rating across Minnesota cities. And that very strong credit position helps tell the market where they should be pricing your bonds when they're bid out. I'll just highlight a few comments from the rating analysts. So they are, they do understand that property values have been increasing here within the community. There's been a significant amount of reinvestment, retention of businesses, and they see that all as a positive aspect of your local economy. There's a couple laudatory remarks about your financial policies that you do have and do defend your reserve targets, keeping a fund balance on hand to make sure that you've got funds saved up for a rainy day and that you can weather future budgets. And then they also recognize that you do budget so that you have break-even or surplus results on a consistent basis, so making decisions to make sure that you're not dipping into those reserves unnecessarily and not resolving deficits. So all of those things are very positive. And then the one remark that I would say was negative on there is growth in the debt profile. So we've made some significant investments over the course of the last two years, both in terms of the police facility as well as street reconstruction projects. But they don't see that that overwhelms any of the positives, and so they stood pat on the credit rating, excuse me. And with that, we did see five bids this morning on the city's bonds, with the winning bidder coming from Baird. So sorry, I've been fighting that this entire time. Their bid came in at three point eight-one percent, so that's the composite interest cost on these bonds. So that, you know, as Andy mentioned, there's different structures for the street versus the police facility, but when you boil all that together into one metric, the low bid at three eight-one percent, the high bid came in just a point one percentile difference, so three point nine-two percent. Those five bids coming from both local as well as national firms, but Baird is actually representing what's called a syndicate, just under thirty different banks and underwriting and broker dealers that are all pooling resources together to provide that bid. This is a much higher result than we've seen recently. I think last year, we were just under one point seven percent on those bonds, but that is reflective of the reality that we're living in right now. The market is certainly reacting to some efforts that the Federal Reserve has taken. They anticipate another rate hike here just within the next month and future rate hikes as the economy is trying to combat inflation. But all that said, these are competitive results, all five bids within point one percent of one another. And it does check out in terms of where we're seeing things and how they're being priced today. And as Andy mentioned, even with that higher interest costs, you know, it is fitting within budget projections and kind of where the planned advances on the levy are going. And so this certainly will be affordable. And we certainly recommend that you do consider awarding to Baird on the basis of their low bid at three eight-one percent. And everything certainly checks out otherwise and is consistent with the offering that I spoke to you about a month ago. So I'd be happy to address any questions that the council has, but there is a resolution, as mentioned, has been updated by your bond attorneys to reflect the terms of the low proposal from Baird, and we certainly recommend you move forward and award to them.
I thought you said last year, we're always going to be under two percent.
Always and forever.
I think this one offsets the one point zero-six percent.
Do we have any concerns that is being provided to us by the syndicate? I don't know, sounds sketchy.
I've heard that.
Typically, we actually do see syndicates during these bids, but yeah.
Don't worry about it.
Can you explain the five hundred, was it the five hundred thousand dollar difference or the?
The.
The premium?
Yeah, the premium, I guess, portion of that.
Yeah, when we offer these to the market, we allow the different firms, the syndicates or the individual banks, some latitude on how they want to bid. So we give them the principal amount that we want, that's going to deliver enough to be able to fund the projects, and then kind of turn it over to them. If they want to apply a straightforward interest rate, slap it on that principal amount, or if they want to bid differently on the timing of the repayment. And one of the things that they'll, we often see, it's kind of a hedge that they, they'll bid a premium, so they'll pay you more upfront for the promise that you'll assign a higher interest rate on those bonds, and that gives them some flexibility in the, if they wanted to exit these bonds and sell them on the secondary market, that higher rate, if rates are trending upward into a higher level, it'd be more marketable in the secondary market at that time. Less likelihood that they'll have to eat a loss under those provisions. So there's some tax exemption, you know, they have to play a little inside baseball to figure out that premium, but it's pretty common over the course of the last ten years as rates have been really low and everybody's been waiting for when rates are going to go higher. It dwindles, you know, there's less premium when rates are climbing like they are today.
Did we have that happen on last year's?
We've had premiums for things. I think other than maybe twenty twenty, when it was Glencoe Bank that bought our bonds, I don't think we saw a premium that year, maybe. But the premium, as long as we use it to reduce our principal balance, it helps offset that higher interest rate.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we're just looking for a motion.
So moved, approved, five, eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollar bond issue.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion from Pat and a second from Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sale passes. See you next year, Nick.
Thank you. We're going for two percent, right?
Right, see what you can do. All right, next we have Lakes and River Improvement Project Budget and Task Update as presented by Bolton and Mink Incorporated.
Good evening, council. With us tonight is Todd Hummer from Bolton and Mink. He's going to provide an overview of the budget and the work scope coming up here and utilizing the three point one million that we received from the legislature a little over a year ago for the Lakes and River Improvement Project. So he'll touch base, walk through a few slides here, and be available to answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, our mayor, city council, city staff. Good to be back here tonight, and I'm not saying that we're going to study more things, but we're actually going to do something, which is a fantastic change in the pace of the things that have been happening on this project. As you recall, we have some goals for the Otter and Campbell Lakes restoration, and this one, the projects that we're talking about today and the process we're talking about today, really gets at that soil loss component of reducing soil inputs from agricultural areas and from the stream banks of the South Fork of the Crow River. And we also will be improving some recreational opportunities of the canoe trail through that process, as well as increasing habitat within the South Fork of the Crow River and looking at the sediment four bay. So I'll walk through where we've been, just to bring people up to date. We have done a considerable amount of historical research and bound that all into one particular file that we have worked and rigorously to review and worked along the technical advisory panel, which includes some of our regulators as well as some of our project partners. We've identified some issues for water quality and habitat improvements, and we've also looked at, with the technical advisory panel, put together some priorities, priorities for implementation to protect and restore Otter and Campbell Lakes. And recently, we just finished the environmental assessment worksheet process and have received all the, we have not received any adverse considerations following your decision not to need an environmental impact statement. So today, we're looking at moving forward, and the proposal you have in front of you is really looking at shaping how we're going to physically and where we're physically going to build improvements to reduce sediment loads into Otter and Campbell Lakes. And the first part of that task is really continuing our ongoing communications with our technical advisory partners, keeping the council up to date. We're going to have several decisions as we walk through this process that will bring back to the council for your consideration, keep you constantly engaged in that. That might improve and include authorization for easement acquisitions. It'll look at authorizing plans for bids and specifications, then also approving those bids, and then following up on a number of regulatory elements as we walk through the permitting process, and then also administering these grant funds and looking at trying to find ways to leverage additional grant funds. As you recall, the legislature did not issue a bonding bill in twenty twenty-two as they were thought to do. So we're all holding our breath. We appear to be in a favorable position, but we will see after the election as to whether that will continue to be the case. And we'll also want to come back after the election and have some strategies sessions with the council about how we move forward and asking for additional funding for this project. The next phase is really looking at the South Fork of the Crow River, trying to deal with some of the bank erosion that's occurring. That contributes very large quantities of sediment, and as we walk through the design process, we're working with John Paulson, your wastewater folks, because it also allows us to get some credits from your wastewater permit that we can receive as a result of restoring some of the stream banks of the South Fork of the Crow River. So these two projects are going to go hand in hand. We have already started to identify some locations where we want to do some of the stream restoration. We're working with our partners at the Soil and Water Conservation District. And then also, we want to be able to conversations with residents and landowners to see if we have some willing landowners that will allow us to have easements for access, maintenance, and construction. That's one of the requirements of state bonding, that we have to have control of the land that we are doing work on. So we've budgeted approximately nine hundred thousand dollars for this effort. We will come back to the council once we've identified those areas and put an estimated cost to those before we bring those up to bid and get your authorization to proceed. And we'll also tell you how many pounds of sediment we're hoping to keep out of Otter and Campbell Lake. We'll work with the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. This is looking at sediment that comes off of primarily our ag lands. They're important for our rural economies, but we also want to help the farmers keep the soil on their property. And so part of that is developing some sediment basins. The Soil and Water Conservation District has already identified the areas in pink here in McLeod County, so we're looking at partnering with them and trying to make our dollars stretch as far as we can. And a couple of ways to do that is, one, to utilize their existing relationships with these landowners, have those conversations take place, and start to do some easement acquisition associated with that. And again, we're looking for willing participants. The budget for this project and what we're trying to accomplish doesn't necessarily look at paying out large dollar values for easements. That's not something that was in our initial budget. We're hoping we're solving problems that the farmers may have and the landowners with these improvements. And then we're also going to explore our ideas of maybe using some of this money to match, some money that might come in from other sources. So we might be able to take, say, a hundred thousand here and leverage another half a million dollars from a federal program or from another state program so that we can do more with the dollars that we have. So we'll continue to explore those alternatives and options as we proceed. Then the last piece is, as we went through the environmental assessment worksheet, there were a number of comments from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources and the Army Corps of Engineers in regards to the construction of the sediment four bay in Campbell Lake, their Otter Lake, right at the, where the mouth of the South Fork of the Crow River enters the lakes. That's really trying to catch all of that sediment, the really big particles that can fill in the lakes and have an adverse impact on habitat and recreation opportunities in this location so that we can manage them long-term and make any investments we have in the lake last for a much longer period of time. So during this process, we're looking at doing some sediment analysis that's requested by the DNR, both sediment cores and then some sediment transport modeling, talking with the adjacent landowners, coming up with some configurations, and then working with the regulators in the design process so that we're not just putting a design together and sending it to the DNR and then asking them to approve or disprove. We really want to work together with them and have an over-the-shoulder review so they have no surprises, and so we have no surprises on the backend. And we come up with a solution that's going to meet the needs of the state water trail that is the South Fork of the Crow River, the recreational activities, and then also some of the habitats that look at these delta areas of the river systems and use them for habitat. So we have to balance all of those pieces, and we'll successfully do that, and we'll work through that over the next coming months here. Then we've also reserved one point four million for the construction of that four bay, and also we may want to come back and allocate some of those funds to maybe some shoreline restoration or some other activities as we start to define exactly the limits of each of those individual projects. So without entertaining any questions.
Could you explain to the audience what a four bay, what it accomplishes and how it does it?
Sure. A sediment four bay is really an area that, as the river comes into the lake, you see river deltas form, and we want to try to cause a delta to form in this four bay and then remove that material and not allow it to get flushed into Otter and Campbell Lakes and fill it in. So our future improvements anticipate taking material, essentially dredging Otter and Campbell Lake and restoring some habitat, adding some new habitat, adding some fishing piers and accessibility to the lakes. And we want to protect that asset. And to do that, the sediment four bay captures that sediment so that we can protect the lakes and we can remove it from there. So it just settles out all the. So it just settles out all the dirt that comes in essentially from the South Fork of the Crow River.
That would be near like Dale's Auto Sales for people's reference, where that would be constructed.
Where you see all the seagulls and basically.
There was quite a flock of them out there today.
Pelicans down there.
It's a very unique concept too. Though it's not novel, there are some of these that exist, but it's essentially a stormwater pond. Water in, sediment drops out, sloughed out, and then it allows us to go remove it as needed or as necessary.
Repeatedly, we can go in and then not just a one time sediment removal.
Yep, and that's a big part of that is to be able to access that in the future to maintain it.
We designed it to make it easy to access as well.
Is Bolton Mink involved with the Redwood River and Redwood Falls in that project? They're dredging it right now?
We are currently not involved in that one.
Sure. Yeah, I was just down there on Saturday and they have like the barges down there and they're actively dredging it. So there's a little further down the tracks than we are, but it was kind of cool to see that, but.
Very similar.
They have the exact same problem we have here and they're just, it was interesting to see those barges and how much. My grandmother's farm is on the Redwood River, so I got a front row seat for it, so.
Todd, obviously, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
No, I was just going to say this, this project is just the beginning and the start. I mean, we have a long ways to go, but it's a good start.
These guys in the front row will see the completion.
Appreciate it.
It's the beginning of a very long, we said this was going to be a marathon effort, not a sprint. And we were lucky, I wouldn't say lucky, we positioned ourselves very well with the legislature to receive that first influx of three point one million. And we're hoping that every bonding session, we can get similar amounts of money from the bonding effort. And then we're also looking at, we didn't make an attempt at the LCCMR this year and we'll clean that up for next year. We got some good comments back on our application and the Clean Water Initiative. There are other grant programs we are exploring to bring additional funds into this. We'll continue to do that.
You may recall when we did that initial study, I think we identified twenty to twenty two million dollars worth of improvements. You and I talked this afternoon about even leveraging some of this money at, you know, for some of those other state and federal dollars. And that's an important part of this money as well as it really, hopefully it will create a, you know, a doubling effect in other areas where we can obtain some additional money too.
Absolutely. And then trying to piggyback this along with your wastewater permit and get as many benefits as possible as we can out of this for the city and the community is, is our goal.
So I think the important thing to remember, council, is that we've got state bonding. This isn't come out of our general fund and to pay for these, these projects, so.
All right, so if there's no more discussion, just looking for a motion to approve or deny the project budget.
Motion to approve Lakes Area River Project.
And did I hear a second from Mary?
Yes, you did.
All right, look, we have a motion from Pat and a second from Mary. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the separating of the Public Works Director City Engineer position into two separate positions.
Mayor and Council, I touched on this a little bit at our budget workshop session. But as you know, we're in the transition period with a vacancy with our Public Works City Engineer position. And for, I guess, yourselves in the public, we don't know, John Olson is filling that role on interim basis. But as we look to, I guess, permanently move forward, you know, I've got a request to the council to separate those positions into two distinct individual jobs. Previously, at one point, going back to the two thousands, those were two separate positions, I think, due to some financial constraints at the city, the city combined those into, into one. And so our Public Works Director was also the, the City Engineer. And I think you did a good job of that over the years. I think in, in recent years with just the expansion of the city, with how large that department is, I think from a management perspective, I think we'd be better off separating those moving forward. I had had previous conversations with Kent when he held that position about looking at doing that. And I think with the opportunity that presents itself now, now would be the perfect time to do that. And so as we look to fill that position, we'd first look to hire a Public Works Director and then that individual will be instructed upon their hire to then look to fill the, the City Engineer position. I think it just gives us some greater flexibility moving forward. And I also think it opens up our recruitment pool and filling both those positions. And so, but per our city charter, I need approval of the council before I could ever do that. And so that's why I'm here tonight requesting that.
So we'll just get a new director and then they'll just have to make one of the biggest decisions that will affect their job.
You know, I will say this, ideally it'd be great in the way that we were looking at it right now is that the Public Works Director, there's not a requirement for them to have an engineering degree. But it would be great if, if they do, because I think that then that just even gives more flexibility to where that person could potentially fill that role until the, until we could fire or hire a new one. And if not, I just think it, you know, it just gives, or if they do have it, I think you still have that additional backup, if you want to say, in that. I just think for how large we've become as an organization, for the amount of projects that are being done within the Public Works Department, along with the rest of the city, I think we've gotten to a point where we really need those two to be separated.
Did you say there's like nine departments?
Nine departments in the Public Works.
Engineer right now? It'll be an increase in salary, obviously, because creating a position.
Yeah, but I just think I noted, you know, we're looking at, you know, probably ninety to a hundred thousand dollars for that new position. Not all that goes into the general fund, some of that will be, it's about a thirty thousand dollar impact to the general fund.
In your experience, are most public works directors engineers by trade?
You can answer that, John. You've, I mean, I, it's fifty fifty, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's, there's basically three models that communities use. They use a Public Works Director, City Engineer, just like Matt is talking about. The other ones combine it like it was prior to this. And, and then the, the third model is a Public Works Director with a consulting engineer. So those are the typical. I would say of the Public Works Directors that I know, many of them actually came through the water and the wastewater side of the business. And the city engineer is obviously more on the PE side and the construction project. But there are obviously PEs that are Public Works Directors and there's business manager type people that are Public Works Directors. It just, you know, it just kind of depends on what shakes out for that community. But those are the three main models. When we talked about this initially, you know, this is the preferred model that staff came up with too. And I was able to share that with Matt earlier this spring. So thinking about earlier this year, when we were starting to think about this potential transition. So hopefully that's helpful.
It is. Thank you. And I would say too, as John noted, that's where, when I talked about opening up that talent pool, I think it, you know, if you're Public Works slash City Engineer, well now you need to have that engineering degree where this really gives you that flexibility of whether it's a mix of business management, public works background, whatever, really does open that door. Then you're still going to have that engineering side of things as well that you'll be looking to fill in the future as well.
All right, if there's no more discussion, I'm looking for a motion to separate these two positions.
I'll make a motion to separate the Public Works Director and the City Engineer positions into two separate ones.
All right, we have a motion by Mary and a second by Dave. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, next we have to set an annual city recognition event for November third, twenty twenty two at five thirty at the Hutchinson Event Center.
This is our annual recognition event of both staff and, and our volunteer committees. And this is where I usually give my annual report and.
The jokes. Been working on your.
Please do.
Give Mark the dry run behind the scenes.
If you've got any ideas, if you've got any one lingers you want to send my way, I'll gladly take them. Yeah, he needs them.
Favorite in the past was when you noted that Schuman, Dolph and Miles were all extremely bald. Bald joke theme there.
As you, as you can tell, I think I'm going to focus heavily on the city attorney this year.
Let the fur fly, so. All right, does anybody want to make a motion to set that meeting? All right, we have a motion by Pat and a second by Dave. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. All right, governance, we have the minutes and reports from committees, boards or commissions. A is Hutchinson Utilities Commission minutes from July second, twenty twenty two. B is the EDA Board minutes from July twenty seventh and August fifteenth, twenty twenty two. All right, staff updates. Mark, do you have anything else tonight?
Nothing else tonight.
All right, Matt?
Nothing. You mentioned Fireman's Park, so that was the only thing I was going to.
All right, council, mayor updates. So Mary, we will start with you.
Oh, you think.
What do you got tonight?
Well, first of all, I am. I am just so pleased the yield sign is up from Highway fifteen onto Lynn Road. I mean, it's awesome and everybody is looking and they're just rolling right through. So thanks for that. Kudos for that. Also, Arts in the Park is this weekend. So even if it's raining, bring an umbrella, get there, support all those people that are going to be there.
And be careful in the downtown area as well.
Places downtown. And that's it.
All right, Dave, do you have anything else?
Think Mary stole my thunder about Arts and Crafts here.
Are you selling donuts or something? Are you selling donuts this weekend or anything? Are you selling donuts?
Flies will be doing their donut stand and serving nineteen nineteen red beer.
There we go. All right, Pat, anything else tonight?
Just bouncing off what these two said, there's also besides Arts and Crafts, there's a lot of neat vendors there selling all different kinds of foods. It's just a great time to come in, you can take advantage of the Farmer's Market Saturday, go to Arts and Crafts. And I drive a lot. My job entails a lot of drivings and, and throughout pretty good sized territory. And I just want to comment on, when we're going through these budgets and you see it's a lot of dollars and, and the infrastructure and everything. And, and if you get a chance to go to just surrounding towns and you kind of see where our dollars go, the streets, the amenities, it's not magic. We do have maybe taxes higher than some people like, but we also have roads that would pass the Pepsi challenge against anybody around here. And that's, I'm dating myself because that's an old commercial, but.
It's from olden times.
It is, it is. But I'm just, I live in a great town and, and the budget is always kind of a important part of our job and, and I'm glad we're getting to come together on it.
And it's Chad's favorite part of the job.
Fine, it's my fourteenth time seeing it, so here we go.
All right, and I didn't have anything extra tonight, so we're just looking for a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion from Pat and a second from Dave. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Good night.